All right, I will call the March 28, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting to order. I will announce that the Board of Supervisors met in executive session this evening at six o'clock to discuss two legal matters and one personnel matter. And with that, I will now turn it over to a roll call, Mr. Nice.
Mr. Altieri.
Here.
Ms. Roberts-Lycat.
Here.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Mr. Russo. Ms. Chanless.
Here.
Your special counsel, engineer, and manager here.
Thank you very much. We will now move into the moment of silence. It's fitting that we have the police officers here this evening for the rewards. And what I ask is that we not only keep our first responders in our thoughts and prayers this evening, but also the families of the state troopers that lost their lives in the line of duty two weeks ago. With that said, we'll stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to move down to item number 5.1, consider approving the agenda. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Roberts-Lycat to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Agenda item six, public comment for agenda items only. If there's anyone here who wants to speak about any agenda items, please come up to the podium, state your name and address. Let the record reflect that there is none. We'll move down to number seven minutes. Consider approving the minutes from the March 14, 2022 meeting.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now get into the resolutions of recognition. 8.1, consider approving resolution 2022-13, recognizing Luke Impriano's Eagle Scout achievement.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number 2022-13, recognizing Luke Impriano on achieving and on his achievements of Eagle Scout, the highest honor bestowed by the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas this achievement represents countless hours of work by Luke, including 25 badges on his journey to Eagle Scout. And whereas this achievement also represents years of leadership within the Boy Scouts by Luke, including serving as patrol leader, quartermaster, junior assistant scout master, and wilderness guide for Luke's Philmont crew. And whereas Luke's Eagle Scout project consisted of planting 10 trees along Goshen Walking Trail in Newtown Township to replace those trees killed by the Emerald Ash Bore. And whereas these trees will help to beautify the trail, provide shade for those residents and guests walking the trail, as well as provide numerous environmental benefits for township's tree canopy. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors in Newtown Township directs a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Luke Impriano on the occasion of his Eagle Scout Court of Honor to be celebrated on Saturday, April 2, 2022, at a Saint Anastasia's Catholic Church, adopted this 28th day of March. That's my motion.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Lycat, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 8.2, consider approving resolution 2022-14, recognizing Jerome
Resolution number 2022-14, recognizing Jerome Blacy on achieving the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Newtown Township recognizes, graduates Jerome "Jerome" Blacy, a member of Boy Scouts of America, Troop 315, on his achievements of Eagle Scout, the highest honor bestowed by the Boy Scouts of America. And whereas Jerry Blacy is known by his family, teachers, employers, peers, friends, and neighbors to demonstrate Eagle Scout character traits related to his service to his community, morality, tolerance, and respect for diversity. And whereas Eagle Scouts are universally recognized to exhibit an increased tendency and participate in health and recreational activities, and to share a greater connectedness to siblings, friends, neighbors, religious communities, and to their country. And whereas leadership traits especially strong in Eagle Scouts have been demonstrated by Jerome Blacy through his Eagle Scout service projects, be prepared to know, and we are stars, we are all stars, which placed six communication boards in strategic locations within Newtown Township baseball fields, reused by speech impaired persons to communicate with others. And whereas Eagle Scout Jerome Blacy has promised on his sacred honor to uphold and promote scouting throughout his life, and to uphold his commitment to scouting values, including duty to God, service to others, and service to his community. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township directs a copy of his resolution be forwarded to Jerome Blacy when the occasion of his Eagle Scout Court of Honor to be celebrated on Saturday, April 24, 2022, at Saint Anastasia Catholic Church, adopted this 28th day of March, 2022. And that's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? I do believe that Jerry is here. So Jerry, I don't know if you want to say anything before we vote. Thank you for your project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations again. All right, last resolution, consider 2025-15, supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quincentennial. Supervisor Chanless.
Like to request a motion to pass National Library Week 2022 proclamation.
I'm sorry, that is not the right one. That is the one I gave you. This is the one for you.
Let me withdraw that. I would like to ask for a motion to pass resolution number 2022-15, the resolution of Newtown Township Delaware County, supporting the Pennsylvania supporting the Pennsylvania Commission of the United States Semi-Quincentennial. Whereas the Pennsylvania General Assembly and Governor Wolf created the Pennsylvania Commission for the United States Semi-Quincentennial, America 250 PA, in 2018, to plan, encourage, develop, and coordinate the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the United States in 2026, and Pennsylvania's integral role in that event, and the impact of its people on the nation's past, present, and future. And whereas America 250 PA hopes to engage all citizens of the Commonwealth, bring the Commonwealth's history into the conversation so Pennsylvanians can better understand the origins and multiple perspectives of issues facing our Commonwealth and nation today, and use history to encourage and inspire future leaders, celebrate the contributions of Pennsylvanians to not only the Commonwealth's history, but also to our nation's history. And whereas America 250 PA wishes to leave a lasting impact on the next generation of Pennsylvanians, and to spark an interest which will ignite the drive for them to appreciate all of the triumphs, trials, and tribulations which contributed to the Commonwealth, for which they are now writing their own history. And whereas America 250 PA will have numerous officially recognized programs, projects, and events over the next five years to inspire future leaders, and celebrate all Pennsylvanians' contributions to the United States over the past 250 years. Now therefore be it resolved, Newtown Township hereby endorses America 250 PA and its mission to educate, preserve, innovate, and celebrate the rich history and diversity of the state. And it is further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Township's state senator and representatives, and PSATs, adopted this 28th day of March, 2022. That's my motion.
Second. Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We will now get into the presentations. Chief Lund, the 2022 Officer of the Year Award.
Thank you for the time tonight to make these presentations. We're going to start with our Walt Wolfe Community Partner Award tonight. First award tonight is the Walt Wolfe Community Partner Award. To help present, the award is Walt Wolfe. Walt's been a longtime friend and supporter of the Police Department. Nobody's been a bigger supporter of the Police Department over the years than Walt. In appreciation for his decades of support, we named this award after him. This award recognizes local business that supports the community and the Police Department. This year's recipient is Cut Above Deli. Cut Above Deli was opened in 1995 by Michael Carniglia on Westchester Pike in Newtown, or in the St. Albans Shopping Center. They've been recognized multiple times as best of the main line, and they've become known for their great customer service and excellent hoagies and sandwiches. So in appreciation for Cut Above's dedicated support of the community and Newtown Township Police Department, Michael, we'd like to present you with this plaque. One up. Get a picture with the board. Our next award is the Clinton Cunningham Officer of the Year Award. This award was named in memory of Sergeant Clinton Cunningham, who passed away tragically four years ago. Here tonight to help present the awards, Kelly Cunningham and Sean Cunningham. Also in the audience is Carrie Lynn, CJ, and Devin Cunningham, and Clinton's parents, Tom and Sue Cunningham. This year's recipient is Officer Chris Asher. Chris was nominated for this award by his fellow officers. Those that nominated Chris had this to say about why they felt he was worthy of this award. Officer Asher has shown great initiative, learning the aspects of the job in Newtown Township, and always has a positive attitude while working. Officer Asher demonstrates professionalism and is dedicated to serving the community. He's extremely passionate about his job, especially in the field of control tactics and use of force. Officer Asher has become a use of force instructor, and his knowledge and experience in jujitsu has been a great asset to our training program. Officer Asher's strength lies in his abilities to teach others in control tactics. Officer Asher is a well-rounded individual who respects his fellow officers and represents himself in a professional manner while on and off duty. Since Chris started, he has shown that he is willing to go out of his way to help improve officers individually, as well as the department as a whole. With Chris taking charge of the jujitsu training, he has made officers more well-rounded and confident when dealing with situations on the street. Chris doesn't hesitate to go beyond his responsibilities to teach others how to improve themselves. Our 2022 Officer of the Year, Chris Asher.
Is that it, chief?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Congratulations again. And we won't, we'll take a few seconds, a few minutes, so everybody can and have to congregate if they don't want. All right, we are going to continue with the meeting. We're going to go down to 9.3, the Library Strategic Plan Overview, with the President from Newtown Square Library Board, Mr. Vinny O'Donnell. We have all the faith in you, Mr. O'Donnell, that you will surpass that.
Thank you. Basically, our strategic plan, we developed it as a three-year roadmap for the entire, and it was developed by the entire board and the director. We started out, ironically enough, our last live meeting was right before the shutdown for COVID. And we did a SWOT analysis, we identified more than 35 potential initiatives. We organized those initiatives around five major areas of staff development, board development, facility and services, finance and technology. Make it more manageable, we honed it further down with a focus on improving the board for things such as selecting trustees, onboarding trustees, training opportunities, improving the library, including the physical plan, staffing, budgeting, and funding. Further moved on to identify items that would improve the patron experience, and then enhance relationships with the township, the library system, businesses, and the community, as well as donors. And our plan ultimately consists of 11 objectives that'll help us accomplish the three goals that we have set out for the next three years. One is to expand fundraising and improve budgeting. Another is to provide director support. And the third is to improve and add patron conveniences. We implementing, we're implementing the plan by basically prioritizing the initiatives, and then forming committees around each initiative. The committee will consist of at least two trustees, and may include non-board participants such as library employees or community members, or any other subject matter expert. This was the first strategic plan for the library. It hasn't been done before. I know from speaking with Arlene and others that other attempts have been made to do a strategic plan, but they never came to conclusion. So we're striving to make this a doable and manageable plan. And while we're doing that, we're also focusing on what our next plan will look like, the 25 to 28 year, you know, three-year plan. Any questions?
No. Thank you very much, Mr. O'Donnell. Is there any questions from the public, I guess, before he sits down?
One other thing, we have a library sale coming up in May. If you can't make it, send people to
We do have one thing before you go, is that we have the resolution where the proclamation declaring National Library Week for 2022. Finding it fitting that you were coming here tonight to speak about the strategic plan of the library, and so Supervisor Roberts-Lycat will read that proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. National Library Week 2022 proclamation. Whereas today libraries are more, are more about what they can do with and for their communities, and not just about what they have on their shelves. And whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, often the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and academic campuses. And whereas libraries serve people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds, providing the resources and space to engage in lifelong learning. And whereas libraries offer equipment and professional staff support, staff support to utilize technology, programs, and services, often free or with nominal charges to users. And whereas libraries are a source for all regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or social economic status. And whereas we recognize librarians as information professionals who provide expertise, services, and guidance for patrons to access credible sources and materials, making their own informed decisions about the world today. And whereas libraries provide access to and display a wide range of information, not just a majority opinion or single perspective. And whereas librarians hold the professional values of diversity, equality, and inclusion to meet the needs of all users. And whereas the PA Forward Literacy as Power Initiative highlights how libraries and staffs encourage literacy, basic information, civic and social health and financial, which contribute to greater personal and community successes. Whereas America is celebrating National Library Week, including April 5 as National Library Workers' Day, and the immense, immeasurable contributions made by library workers. April 6, as National Outreach Day, showing library services are not limited to their physical location, and April 7, as Take Action for Libraries Day, encouraging community support for libraries. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Board of Trustees, that's not us.
Yeah.
Be it resolved that we, the Board of Supervisors of Newtown Township, proclaim National Library Week, April 3 through 9, 2022. In Newtown Square, Delaware County, during this week, we encourage all residents to visit our libraries and explore all that they have to offer to help move PA forward. And that's my resul, proclamation.
Is there a second? Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts-Lycat, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. O'Donnell, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now going to move down to 9.4, Gather in the Circle. Lyndon McIsaac, Logan Axelson. The Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission.
Hi, everyone.
Oh, hi.
I am not able to share video at the moment, but be happy to present either way.
Yeah, so, so Steve, will you be presenting the slides, or do I share the screen? Should I share my screen?
Just one second.
Okay.
Can you now see the screen?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. My name's Lyndon McIsaac. I am founder of Gather in the Circle. And I'm joined tonight by Logan Axelson, who is a senior transportation planner with the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission and co-founder of their expo program, which he will talk about later in our presentation. And tonight we want to talk about, just present a brief overview of the results from our St. Albans Circle Traffic Commission. from our St. Albans Circle Traffic Calming Demonstration that we held last year during the fall. But before I talk about the data, Steve, can you advance to one slide? So that's our agenda, and then the next slide. So right there. So I just wanted to talk briefly about what Gather in the Circle has been doing and what we accomplished last year. And just reviewing the list, you can see we've been fairly busy. And we really use the community's strategic plan goals to help guide our work. And we work hard to bring the community together and to help test ideas and inspire possibilities for the St. Albans Circle area. So we have a really busy 2022 planned, and I'll come back in a month and we'll talk about that a little more. But just want to start talking about the traffic calming data next. So Steve, if you could advance one. So we had a survey that we distributed online last fall, and we had it open for about a month, and we received about 400 responses. And as you can see, 87% live nearby the St. Albans Circle area. So most are community members that live very close by. Next. And what we heard from the data also is that about half said speeding and cut-through traffic are problems for the St. Albans Circle. And that about a third did not feel safe walking in the St. Albans Circle area before the traffic calming demonstration and the pedestrian crosswalks were installed. About a third also said that they would walk more if there are more crosswalks and slower traffic speeds. And then, you know, we saw also a 10%, almost 10%, 7% increase in feeling safer after the traffic calming was installed. Next. And what we also heard is that, you know, people really like the crosswalks a lot, but they did not like this particular traffic calming demonstration. So 52% or about half said they would like to see the crosswalks permanently installed around the circle. About 40% said they would like to see some form of traffic calming permanently installed around the circle as well. But 12% mentioned feeling very confused by this particular traffic calming demonstration. And about a third mentioned negative feelings about the traffic calming demonstration. So I think to that, those two last statistics in particular, we believe that better communication could have helped mitigate some of those feelings. And so, you know, we're going to work on improving that going forward. So I'm going to turn it over to Logan, who's going to talk about the Expo Program and the traffic count data.
Thanks, Linda, and good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. You may know this already, but Expo, I work for the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. I'm a transportation planner, and Expo is our Tactical Urbanism Assistance Program. Tactical Urbanism is a, it's an international sort of placemaking and transportation movement that uses short-term temporary pilot interventions to inspire long-term change. So for this project, we provided, we purchased the materials, the bollards, the speed bumps. We helped create the design, worked with township officials to have that design adopted and then implemented, and provided some travel monitoring counts and vehicle and pedestrian counts. Next slide, please. So with the limited time, I just want to pull out a couple of examples of what we saw in some of the count data that we collected as part of this pilot. And I'm hoping that'll offer a little bit of sense of, you know, the sort of way forward, how we might try something different in the future to improve walkability in this area. So Linda mentioned the support that we found in the survey for, for crosswalks, and that was really borne out in the pedestrian counts we took, which you'll see on the left. We've took counts at two locations, one at Rhodes Avenue in St. Albans Circle, and one at Chapel Road in St. Albans Circle. Both saw an uptick, but the really dramatic increase was at Chapel Road, where upon implementation of that crosswalk, we saw almost double the amount of pedestrian traffic. So I think that's a good sign that there is a sort of desire for walkability, you know, sort of aligns with the survey data we saw. I also want to point out some of the speed data we were able to capture as well. So just to give you one representative example here, at Rhodes Avenue, we really saw that the direction of cut-through traffic was both dramatically, showed dramatically more volume and higher speeds. So speeding was more of a problem on routes that would be used for cut-through traffic. For instance, Rhodes Avenue westbound rather than eastbound, where people are generally not driving, yeah, westbound being the main cut-through traffic direction. So I just wanted to pull out these couple high, sort of representative samples of our data, just to demonstrate that I think what we see in the survey data and what we observed really do, do indicate that there is some desire for more walkability, especially crosswalks, and that in some future traffic calming efforts, should you choose to pursue that, I think we might try a more targeted approach that focuses on those strengths only, rather than going on a sort of all-at-once type of approach that we work with the township to pursue this time around. So I'm going to pass it back to Linda, who's going to share some of our takeaways here, and then...
Thank you, Logan.
Thanks.
So for the key takeaways from the data, both sides, is that, you know, people did really enjoy and like the addition of the pedestrian crosswalks, and they do want them to become permanent. You know, people were confused by this particular traffic calming pilot, but they do agree that traffic calming is needed in the area. So we also learned that better communication moving forward and better public explanation of what was to come, even though we did feel we made a concerted effort, we can do better, would have reduced some of that confusion. And we believe that more testing is needed to find the best solution to help calm speeds and increase safety and increase walkability for the area. So that is our presentation, and happy to answer any questions, and thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Linda, and thank you, Logan. I should have also asked Linda, what time is it over across the pond right now?
It is, it is 12:46, but I had my coffee, and so I feel good.
There you go. I'm happy you haven't conformed to tea. I like your keeping it the American way there. Thank you for that. Is there any questions from the Board?
I just had a quick question. Is there somewhere where like the raw results are available?
Yeah, yeah, so, so I have, there was a link in the presentation, but it didn't come across maybe as a link if it was printed out on your end, but I can send it and it is available. Yeah.
Is there any public comments? Mr. Glazer. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Glazer, 353. Quite honestly, I was grateful for the traffic. Quite honestly, I think I'll be the wrong problem. Don't think walking around is really the issue. What's really needed is down the speedway, I'm just saying. Is a cut-through. Honestly, I think that seemed to be... You say Logan's one way, so people... You go around the circle, you can't go down, cut-through, one way. You people on Westchester, I agree with you. Traffic? That would serve more good for you. They make... Volume. Suddenly, always other things would be a problem. Traffic here was 30 or 40 years ago. Traffic is like water, takes the paddles. But people shoot down on roads. You don't go the other way on roads, there's no real place to go, but there is a... Point, avoid the center of the avenue. So, you know, all things considered. Walkways are good, crossing is good, and these aren't bad things. But they're really not the problem. I don't think they're the problem, people on roads in St. Albans. Volume and the speed has taken away, and the way to do that, the distance from there. Have to be a Jersey barrier that says, go down St. Albans. How's an hour to get down to one lane, cut, to have what you require time? Right idea, good place for...
Nate, I think we looked at, at something like that, and George can speak to it. I think it has to do with the truck loading for the center, right? Along where Casey's and Felini's are, the trucks, there's like some kind of turning radius. There's some kind of issue there, because we had looked at maybe changing some, some things. Am I, am I, there were reasons. And, and I think it was the truck, and if you want, Nate, we can provide that information, I think.
Having a problem visualizing it, but...
Because I think the entrance, George, do you want to?
It's the back, I mean, it's the backside of the stores where they come in while the roads have...
Yes, right, George? Yeah, not to belabor, because we still have a big agenda, but...
Yeah, one, one of the challenges is a lot of the businesses in the, in the St. Albans Shopping Center there, like where Cut Above and Casey's and all that, their deliveries actually come in off of St. Albans Circle and come in the back there. They go down roads and they come in the back, that's the way they're set up. So as a result, and also Luigi and Giovanni's and all those, we needed to make sure that the, the trucks were able to make those, make those various turns, which, which created some challenge.
Thank you, George.
Any other comments or questions from the public? All right, seeing none, we're going to move down to reports from the Police Department. Chief Long, do you have anything you need to add? Thank you very much. From the Fire Department, Chief Everloff, do you have anything you need to add? She's online, I don't know if he's online. Nope, okay, seeing none. From the Emergency Medical Services, he's not here, I'm guessing he's not online?
Unless you have a question on his report, I may have an answer.
I believe so. Public Works, George, you have anything you need to add? I just want to add one thing. On Saturday was the CRC Creek Cleanup. Newtown Township is part of two watersheds, the CRC, which is the Chester Ridley Crumb Creek, and then the Darby Creek, so we have the DCVA one on Saturday at Greer Park at nine o'clock. You're welcome, Wade, I give you that plug there. But the, the thing that I wanted to mention is this was the 24th Annual Creek Cleanup. This, the site for Newtown Township for CRC is Drexel Lodge Park. We had about, you know, 14 individuals who volunteered. And the one thing that all the residents kept saying, as well as those who were volunteering, was even though we collected 700 pounds, an estimated 700 pounds of trash out of the, out of, you know, Drexel Lodge, how clean the site was compared to the other locations. And even the site coordinator from the CRC was amazed. And he said it's a testament to not only the creek cleanup, but really to the Public Works guys, who were out there all the time, keeping that park and all of our parks pristine, quite frankly. The trash that we did collect was trash that was well, well, well back in the woods. That would have been sort of outside the purview of, of the Public Works guy. But I just wanted to highlight that there was a lot of residents who are extremely impressed at how seen those parks were. And it's not from that annual cleanup, because we only do that once a year. You guys are out there all the time, so thank you, and make sure your guys know that as well. Make sure your team knows that, thank you. Report from the building slash Codes Officer, Mr. Rescheck, I don't believe there's anything to add there. No one has any questions? From the Finance Director, Mr. Lafayette, nothing to add there?
I, I would just add that we have submitted the budget for the budget award again, so that was done this last week.
Perfect. From the Library Director, I don't believe Arlene has anything to add. From Leisure Services, Mr. Enhausen is not here, and I don't think there's anything to add. Our Township Manager, Ms. Nelson.
Excuse me, I promoted or demoted, I don't know what that is yet. Sure, Township Engineer, Ms. Nelson, nothing more to add. Thank you very much. And now to our Township Manager. That is the promotion, Mr. Nice.
All right, a couple of quick things I have for you. There was a recommendation for a newsletter piece to go into the newsletter from the Finance Committee that we put in your packet. I hope you've had a chance to review it, and if there's no objections, we'll move forward with that letter. And you all good, no problems? Okay. Pico Tree Giveaway will be towards the end of April, and so I want to make sure people are paying attention. There, they've set aside a certain number of trees, I believe it's 50 trees that they've set aside on, that Newtown Township residents can get. As I understand, these are like four-gallon sized trees, so that they're decent size and that they can be planted in the right of ways. So, and that's the whole idea, if you want to plant these in front of your home. And so I think that's the only qualification, isn't that correct, George?
That, that is correct. I actually checked with Pico earlier, there were 10 trees left available. So if, if folks hadn't had the chance to go onto the website and, and get their tree and go through the module, there's still a little bit of time, there's 10 more available.
Good, so that's great news, that means 40 more trees will be planted in Newtown for sure, and really encourage others to get involved in that. That's a great way for that tree giveaway. There's also in your packet, and I just lost it, the electronic recycling at Rose Tree, do you remember what weekend that is, George? Oh, here we go, there we go, it's up on the screen, April 10. I know we get quite a... I'm sorry, May 10. Somebody can read the signs better than I can, please. So Tuesday, May 10. And so I just wanted to bring this up, because a lot of people do call and ask us about electronic recycling in the township where they can take things. This is a great opportunity to do that. There is a fee structure tied with it, and it, this ad has it, and we will also put it... It's not, not only was it on our agenda, but we'll also put it on the website, and we'll get it out on the Facebook page, so people know what it is. So this is some of the things that are happening that I think are important for people to know about.
Is that it, Mr. Nice?
I believe that's it at this time, yes.
Any questions for the Township Manager from the Board? Any questions from the Township Man, or the Township Manager from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll move down to Mr. Glazer to the podium, please.
Yeah, just a question about, I see, in terms of fee schedule, is this the shape of things to come? Because it seems we want to get people to dispose of electronics the right way, and this is putting a barrier up, albeit a somewhat small one. And it seems like the bigger, the electronics proper disposal is a big problem versus paying a few bucks publicly to get rid of them the right way. I'm wondering again if we're using the right set of incentives to get people to do what we want them to do. You know, in Newtown Township, it's probably not a huge issue, but I, as more and more old electronics emerge, I think it's going to be, you know, some parents are going to say, how mu, you know, I got two kids, three printers, all this stuff, and I'm, you know, at some point it becomes a significant issue.
I, I would just make note that this is not the electronic recycling that Newtown Township sponsors. So this is the one, I believe, that's sponsored by the county this time. And so we, we, we just know that when we do ours, typically people have said, is there any others? And I just am trying to make people aware of this many different ways that they can do that.
And that's good.
And, and there is also Retriever available, and that's connected on our website. They have a small fee for televisions, but I think most everything else is free.
Okay.
If you do it with, through them.
And that's great, as I said, I saw this, and I was first wondering if that was again part of a...
I, I believe that we only tend to charge for the old tube-type tele, not tube tip, what, what are they? Tube.
The old bulky, yeah, the old...
The big bulky ones.
Okay, no, that's good, as long as we're still providing that, that point of on, that's why we're concerned.
Mr. Selleckson, to the podium, sir.
Paul Selleckson, 4727 Mill Hollow Lane, and I come to you tonight as President of the Newtown Square Business Association. You know, the Business Association, every now and then we want to take out an ad, and we also have about 150 members. And it's a little bit confusing for us, because we want to, we want to be fair, we want to be correct. But Hometown Press sort of...
Is this about the recycling?
No, this is about the...
You're going to have to wait until the end.
Oh, I'm not going to wait.
Yeah. That's where the public comment is. Public comment for that, sorry, Paul. All right, we're going to move down... All right, we're going to move down to eleven, payments, eleven point one. I get a motion to consider approving pay request number one from KBC Construction, the amount of fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy cents. For the substantially completed project on Glendale Road as recommended by the township engineer. This will leave six thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty cents for the paving trench restoration. Is there any boards, uh, motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor um. Chanless, is there any board discussion?
Eileen, is this the stormwater management um project?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item twelve point one, bills. Uh, the, I will make a motion to approve the bills on check register A dated March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two totaling two hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars and zero and and nine cents. Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All's in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Twelve point two, I will make a motion to approve the bills on EFT Register A dated March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two totaling seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All's in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section thirteen, developer release thirteen point one, consider the escrow release number one request by Richard Dohin. For the substantially completed project at Twenty Clover Lane and the amount of twenty-three thousand, three hundred dollars, leaving thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars in the bond as approved by the township engineer.
Okay.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thirteen point two, can I get a motion to table? Uh, I, I will make a motion to table. Let's kind of get a second.
Second.
Motion was made by the chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. I count the table. This motion, is there any board discussion? All's in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Just so the residents are aware, the reason why we're tabling this motion. And the uh spirit of transparency is that it had been requested by BPG that uh uh they wanted to have a few more conversations. Before we took any official action on this. And so as a courtesy, uh, in terms of parliamentary procedure and quite frankly, ease to not have to redo the agenda. We went for the table. We'll now move down to section fourteen, new business, fourteen point one. I get a motion consider, to consider approving the appointment of Campbell Durant as special counsel for labor and employment matters on an as needed basis. At the rates as per the engagement letter and authorize the township manager to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Uh, is there any board discussion? The only thing that I would like to note on this is that this is a uh role that is a limited scope. It is consistent to what other municipalities across the county and quite frankly, the Commonwealth do for specialized employment matters. That might come before the township. Uh, it is no different, as I said, than a lot of other municipalities across county. And it's just an added uh protection, quite frankly, for the township to have a uh, an attorney who specializes solely in this. Is there any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point two, consider approving the change over costs for converting the police department's traffic vehicle for, for use in the non-uniform employees at a cost of fourteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-six cents. The police department will get the vehicle currently being used by the township manager. Motion was made by Supervisor Chan, the seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor?
I, I just would make note, just so everybody understands, this, this was the car we bought last year. And we bought an actual police car that I've been using for the last year. I need a car for codes specifically. And uh, so we want to get this car in under the police while the warranty is still good. And then we'll take, we're taking this other car that they're not, that the traffic are out. Uh, we had not budgeted for this fourteen thousand, so I just wanted to declare that.
Is there any other board discussion? All's in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point three. I get a motion to consider authorizing the township manager and required supervisors to execute all necessary documents pertaining to the six hundred and fifty thousand PennDOT multimodal transportation fund grant award. For the installation of sidewalks on Ellis Avenue between Westchester Pike and Bishop Hall Road.
Some.
Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Uh, is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice, do you have anything you want to add?
I would just add that this was, if you recall, this was the grant that we went for to actually do a trail. Uh, coming from Drexel Lodge Park back here to the township building and it was a much smaller amount than what we had gone for. Uh, they've agreed to let us do the sidewalk along Ellis Avenue, which we think that is the largest win uh for this part of the trail. And so that's what this is.
Do we have, what is the timeline for something like this?
So uh, I have to go back and look at what the timeline is because we've been waiting for them to give us approval. They gave us approval this last week. For the six hundred, for, to use the six hundred and fifty specifically for that purpose. Usually it's two and a half years uh from the time that the initial. The initial award, which was, I believe, last year. So we'll be getting on this very quickly. Our goal was to do it this summer. And so we'll be uh with this, we'll be taking the steps to move forward.
Is that still our goal to have it done this summer?
Well, I want to at least get it designed and ready to go. We may have to be next spring, but let's, I want to get it all done.
I think that the, the, the board, not to speak for them, but I will speak for them. I think that we would all be very excited if we could get it still done by the summer and spring.
I would, I would love.
Summer and fall.
So I would love to get it done by summer fall. That's our goal.
Perfect. Um, if you can keep us abreast of that, because I know a lot of the residents over there are extremely excited for that. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point four, consider approving the purchase and installation of a set of two double plank bleachers for Gable Field at a cost of nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and forty-eight cents. The costs will be covered by the budgeted amount of fifteen thousand and the remaining balance will be taken from the budgeted line item labeled Gable Field Improvements.
A second.
Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice, do you have anything you need to add?
Not on that one.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point five, consider approving the two requested signs from the environmental advisory committee. Motion was made by Supervisor Chan, the seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? Are they on the screen? Can we show them to the public, please? Mr. Nice, do you have anything you need to add?
So this one here, I believe, is the one that's going to the, across the street. Um, at uh, the, that side of Gable Park, uh, where all the trees were planted last year. So it's just to let people understand the importance of the trees being planted there, why we did that project last year. And then the other sign uh will be at, there'll be one at both of the two rain gardens, one out here in front at the township building. Uh, and then the other one up on the hill uh at uh the. The baseball area up there where we did the nail uh. Where we did the rain garden up on the hill. I'm, I'm, it's the entrance, second entrance, I believe, is the one I'm trying to think of. So that, so both of those will be there. So people understand uh why those were put in and what their purpose is and hopefully encouraging people, particularly. Uh, with rain gardens to consider doing that in their own yards and what it impact it can make on stormwater.
Perfect. Any other board discussion? All's in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fourteen point six, consider approving the article submitted by the finance committee for the spring edition of the newsletter. Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Chanless. We were all provided a copy of that letter. I believe it's also published on the agenda. Mr. Nice uh alluded to it in his manager's report, but is there anything else you need to add to that? All is in favor signify by saying aye. All's opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll now move down to all business. There is no old business. Is there any board comment? Of course, I have something I need to add. Let me just add this. Uh, as I mentioned, Newtown Township is part of two watersheds, the Chester Ridley Crumb Creek and then the Darby Creek. The DVCA, the Darby Creek Value Association, is holding their thirty-eighth annual watershed wide cleanup event, which will take place this Saturday, April second, twenty twenty-two. Which is Supervisor Partridge knows is two days before my birthday. Uh, that, that event will take place at nine o'clock. Uh, and will go until twelve o'clock at Career Park. There, you, is there a recommended way that they pre-register? Perfect. That information has been shared on our township website as well as our social media pages, uh, but I wanted to make sure that we gave it a plug. There will also be a cleanup at the same time going simultaneously at Brookside Park that our police department will be doing. They have been doing that for the last couple of years. Uh, I think it's just another great community service project that they do here in the community and something that should be mentioned. Uh, with that, I'll now move to public comment for anything that wasn't on the agenda. Seeing none, items for the next agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I made a mistake in my manager's report. Can I make a correction?
The mighty have fallen. Go ahead.
Pretty heavily. Um, so under the finance recommendation for the news, township newsletter, I actually gave you the letter. That was not what was supposed to be under my report. I apologize. I was supposed to bring back to you that the. Finance committee came back and was actually making the recommendation. I don't know, you need to take an action at this point. But that the township newsletter not contain advertising. And so they, I just wanted to bring that back to your attention. That's what I was supposed to bring back to.
Perfect. Um. All right. All right. Uh, with that being said, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lake Cap, this meeting.